We have a forum and the agenda was properly posted.
Yes, sir.
Stand for the Fled to Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, item four is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak about any subject that is not a specific agenda item. I don't think we have anybody. Okay. Item five is discuss and consider the minutes of the regular village board meeting of June 18th, 2018 and workshop of June 25th, 2018. Any comments, corrections, additions to any of those? Motion to approve. Okay? Second? Motion and second to approve minutes as presented. Any other discussion?
Um, one, on number 11, communications and miscellaneous business for the June 18th. It says the motion was carried with a voice vote of seven oh oh and there was only six of us.
Oh. Yeah.
That's correct.
Good catch. Okay, without correction, anything else? Okay, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Um, on the agenda, we, Sean has some people here from Parks, Rec and Forestry with a presentation tonight, so if it's okay, if we jump down to item eight, three, Parks, Rec and Forestry, there's a presentation and then I'll let you get your presentation underway so these guys can not have to hang around for the whole meeting.
Unless they want to.
What's that?
Unless they want to.
Yeah, they can if they want to.
So, we have Brian Straka here from Commercial Recreation Specialist, which is a playground company and especially a splash pad company out of Verona. As we're kind of beginning to plan for the splash pad, one of the big things that I need you guys to decide on is how we're going to handle the waste part of the water. The two options are is that we do a recirculation system where that water just gets repurposed or we do a flow-through system where it can also get repurposed either into, it can go into the sanitary sewer, the storm sewer, or into retention ponds and then just kind of perk out and become part of, uh, part of the water table. So, I've asked Brian to come in and just kind of give you, I put some stuff in your packet and talked about the difference between the two and the cost difference between the two, so I've asked Brian to come in and just kind of give us a little bit of a, of a water management 101. Brian?
Hi. Thanks for your time. Just, just a little bit of background, Vortex is the manufacturer of, of features and, and we handle the distribution for Vortex. Vortex has done over 7,000 splash pads worldwide. We've done about 300 in Minnesota, Wisconsin and New Jersey. So, just a little bit more background on who we are. But, the water management system is important, it's the overall solution and, and it really gets into the engineering. So, you have the, the flow-through and the recirc, uh, two different avenues you could go through on a splash pad. And also, with recirc, you know, you have to meet some of the healthiest, health and safety standards and regulations. So, um, what are we going to do is just walk through, first of all, recirculation. The water would come in to a tank, a holding tank. The tank would be 2,000, 3,000 or 4,000 gallon tank depending on the, the volume, GPM gallons per minute for the splash pad. It would then recirc through the chemicals and it would be added, um, in the recirculation, the addition of, uh, acid and chloro, similar to like a pool. And when the activator on the pad is, is hit, the water then pushes out to the pad, goes up through the features and goes through a cycle, cycle then goes down into the drain, the water does into the, uh, degree trap and then back over the tank. And so, that's where you get the, the recirculation. You only need a one inch line, water line coming in, you fill the tank, it just keeps recirculating. There's a little bit of loss of water, uh, evaporation, dather load, but that's about it for, uh, the recirculation system. As far as the, the mechanicals, you would need a CPO, Certified Pool Operator, um, to manage the, uh, system. The, the chemicals go out every day, take a test on the water and, and there is some, some added cost associated with that. As far as what it looks like out on, on the pad, we have multiple different setups of, of the mechanicals. This one happens to be a dome pack, it sits up about three, four foot out of the ground. So, as you can see, the pad's out here, the degree trap, backflow converter, the water, the two chemicals are on the side, uh, there's a tank, keeps recirculating, push the button, goes out to the pad and then just keeps going through the motion. Another one is if you had a building, uh, we have a skid that you just slip right in and all the plumbing is, is done, hooked up right to the manifold. You, you again have the two tanks and the system goes through the process, but this is the, the two examples of the mechanicals that you would have associated with, uh, a The difference now is between the, the recirc and the flow-through. The flow-through, depending on the size of the pad, you would have a two, three or four inch water line coming in. Once the activator's pushed, the water's released through the manifold, up into the features and then back out and it can go through the storm, the sewer, the sewer would be an added cost. Most of the flow-through systems go through, um, storm system. You can repurpose the water or you can percolate the water back into the ground. In your case, you have two retaining ponds, two or three, something like that. So, you can actually take the water and move it out to, um, a holding tank, the retaining pond and let it percolate down. So, with the, the two systems, um, if you want to kind of combine the two, uh, on a flow-through, you can actually, uh, recapture the water and that would cost another tank. And then with pumps, you could pump that out, irrigate the soccer fields, the rugby fields or, or ball dunking fields if you have out there. And that would be on a flow-through system and then, uh, irrigating the, the different fields. So, just to kind of recap, there, there's only two ways to do this, recirc or flow-through. On cost, and this is also included into your packet, I took a, a 200 gallon per minute and this is the 2,500 square foot pad, 2,500 square foot pad is, is about average, 200 on both the recirc and the flow-through and you have, um, the equipment cost and I'm just taking examples, let's say the overall budget's 250. Your equipment cost, um, would be about 50,000 here and about 125,000 on the recirculation system. So, when you add the recirculation system right up front, it's going to cost another 75 to 85,000 dollars. Looking down the road, is there a payback on that? You factor in your, your water, your sewer, your maintenance, your normal parts, your chemical cost and your electric cost and as you go all the way down through here and total up, and this, this gets back to the other screen as well, so if you have that 250,000 budget, what is this going to look like in 10 years? The flow-through is going to cost you about 375 and the recirc's going to be about, uh, 362. So, in about 10 years, you'll get the payback on the recirc. And, and that's just on the, the example I did here. If you have a smaller pad, say you have a 150 GPM, your payback's probably going to be more like the 15, 16 years. So, just to give you some example of cost and then moving forward, what's it going to take? The biggest cost for the flow-through obviously is the water, but as you move down to the recirc, the maintenance cost, the chemical cost and the electrical cost because there's two pumps within the, uh, recirc system. And that's where the electrical, and, and the electrical pumps are used 24 hours a day. So, they just keep recirculating every day you have the, the pad available to turn on. Any questions?
Yeah, for the recirculation, um, cost analysis there, you mentioned earlier in your presentation, there's, you'd have to have a certified person there to test the chemicals, test the water, et cetera, ensure that, you know, everything's, uh, up to speed where it needs to be. With the other system, I'm assuming you have to have the same kind of person there testing the water even though you're putting fresh water in all the time or whatever? I'm just curious why you said one and didn't say it for the other.
Yeah. With the flow-through system, the maintenance involved is really going out and picking up the trash and maybe hosing off the pad. You don't have to maintain the water because the water's coming from a public source.
Yeah.
Um, so it is clean and fresh coming in. Uh, so really, you're going to have maintenance on both, the difference is just that, that CPO.
Okay, and is that included in those costs to recoup in 10 years? That's my question.
Yes, both the maintenance costs are, are-
Including that person?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. We figure about 15 minutes a day-
Yeah.
For the flow-through and about, uh, oh, anywhere from 25 to 40 minutes depending on what you have to do. Now, at the end of the season, there's a little bit longer maintenance too when you winterize.
Right.
So, you have to empty the tank and, and, and that's a little bit longer than on a flow-through because there's no tank.
And now, uh, what's the longevity of both systems? In other words, at what point is the village going to have to replace one versus the other? You know, at, at year 11, are we going to replace them both or is it year 15 and 17 or whatever, based on your experience?
For that one, Ron.
I can jump in on that probably. Okay, Ron Rhodes.
Ron?
I'm part of Commercial Recreation Specialist. I'm here supporting Brian, but, um, I've been doing splash pads since about 2001. Um, you know, to your first question regarding maintenance, um, you know, Brian explained the difference between the recirculating system and the flow-through. I would also point out that the recirculating system is governed like a swimming pool, so it falls under Department of Health Code-
Yeah.
And that's why you need to have that CPO, so that's a state pool code requirement. The flow-through does not require that, using potable water, uh, from a potable water supply and it's just going out to drain, so just like your shower, okay? With regards to the equipment itself, the splash pad features themselves, the water features, uh, they're all stainless steel, 25-year warranty, they'll last as long as the concrete. Uh, the recirculating system, the pumps, the filters, uh, the controllers, it's very much like a swimming pool. It's a little bit of a corrosive environment with some chlorine and some acid, so, you know, if you're 15, 18, 20 years, right in that range, that's going to be right about probably where you're starting to switch some of these things out, okay? Uh, on the, uh, flow-through system, that manifold, uh, that the water goes through is a stainless steel manifold, um, it's going to last as long as the features. You've got some solenoid valves, um, that you may swap out, uh, every 10 years maybe. Uh, they're basically like irrigation valves, so it's a, a small ticket item. So, your parts cost would be minimal on your flow-through, a little bit more on that recirc system, but I would, uh, budget in, at probably about the 17 to 20-year mark, you're probably going to be ready for some new pumps. There's going to be some refurbishing of that recirculating system, very much like a swimming pool.
Okay. One question with the Certified Pool Operator, how hard is that to attain? Is that something one of our Parks and Rec staff could get so it would be not a big-
They can. Uh, the Wisconsin Park and Rec offers trainings, uh, there's numerous trainings around the state, um, uh, so it's, uh, pretty typical-
Okay.
And a Park and Rec staff or a public works or whoever the city would choose to could get educated on that and pass that class.
Okay. And then from, from your business perspective, uh, of these systems that you put in proportionally, which one do municipalities choose?
Well, I'd say we do about 75%, 75 to 80% of, um, flow-through systems.
Okay.
And a lot of it is the cost, you know, Brian pointed out in his model, um, the initial build cost is just for the mechanicals, you're looking at about 75,000 additional. Also, uh, a recirc system is governed like a swimming pool, so it falls under, um, DSPS pool code, so it has to be stamped, engineered. Uh, you do need an outdoor shower, you need a phone line, you need a restroom. Those things aren't there within, uh, a certain distance. Uh, with a recirculating system, those things are not required and it does not come under state pool code guidelines, right? So, a lot of the cities that are putting them in are, you know, uh, 2,000 to 3, 3,500 square feet, medium-sized pads and, um, they don't have pre-existing facilities for, you know, these large parks, so they go with a recirc system. The cities that are building a little bit more of a destination park where they really see it as a draw, um, like the city of Madison and Milwaukee and, uh, sure, a number of them, then they'll go and invest more, uh, in their recirculating system and they have a little bit more infrastructure in those parks existing. But, I'd say about 75% are, uh, flow-through systems, about 25% are recirculating systems.
All right, thank you.
There's a daily volume maximum too with the flow-through, right?
There is, yeah. Uh, yeah, you're right on the money. Um, and it's, it's point, it's called out in code, uh, 50,000 gallons per day. When you go over 50,000 gallons a day, uh, as per DSPS guidelines, uh, now you have to have that plan stamped, uh, and it has to go through a plan review with the state. And that's, you know, the reality is that's an awful lot of water. You can do a lot with not that much water. It's not the wetter the better, the more water the better, it's more how you're using it and how you're creating play value with that water. So, there's strategies for water conservation and, uh, I would say one isn't necessarily right, wrong or better than the other, it's really what is the community looking to build? What are they looking, you know, how do they want to use it? What are they after?
Is the flow-through constantly going, like the recirc, you turn off or it turns off, so is the flow-through the same way, like push a button and it turns off?
Well, they, they're, they're both going to operate similar. Uh, the recirculating system is going to recirculate that pump, will recirculate that water in that containment tank seven days a week, 24 hours a day, all right? But, like Brian pointed out, on the, uh, on the pad, there's a bottler, there's an activator, so your timer turns on, it's controlled by a timer at 10:00 in the morning, the splash pad turns on, sends signal out to this activator. So, when a child goes out, puts their hand on the activator at 10 o'clock, the pad goes and water comes out. It runs for typically a four-minute sequence and every minute in that four-minute timeframe, different products turn on and off, so it's always doing something different. It runs for four minutes, then it shuts off. Then the kids have to go and put their hand on the bottler again to get it to go active again. So, it's user activated, it's only spraying water when there's users on the pad. Both work the same way and the only difference is that a recirculating system, that a recirculation pump will be going and circulating that water and cleaning that water all the time.
If we have the retention facility to handle that, I mean, that makes sense, but I'm just curious if we did into the sewer, might, would that impact what we pay to Madison Metro Sewerage District with that amount of water then? Is that true? Okay, you already-
On the cell set of the park, there's a infiltration base and I can literally hear it percolating, like takes some water, so, it's not for stormwater, but for handsome flow, there's a lot of sandy soils out there.
Okay. Any other questions?
One of the comments that we had a rugby representative at our Parks meeting and, and they were very interested because they pay for the water to irrigate the rugby field and if you think about it, when the splash pad is going to be used the most is when it's hot and that's when they need most for irrigation, so they were very interested in that. And then we, we use freshwater to irrigate the fields out there too, right? So, um, they let us use, or we, we share that water wheel, but either way, I guess it would be a matter of investing in some infrastructure, tanks and pumps to, to make that work. But, um, it probably would have a decent payback, I would think. So, the flowed water would, potentially wouldn't be wasted if we did a flow-through.
Ryan, can you talk about that too? That's, we're talking about like a 4,000 gallon tank, right? That we would have to put into the ground.
I think 30,000.
30,000?
Well, what, what, well, I'll jump in quick, but, uh, we've done some studies with, uh, municipalities in the past, but really the question is, you know, where the water's coming from, where the water's going to, you know, getting a gauge of what their demand is for their irrigation, right?
Yeah.
Is it 30, 60,000 gallons? You know, to water, um, if I get these numbers right, but I believe to water one acre with one inch is about 27,000 gallons of water, okay? A typical flow-through splash pad that we see probably uses from 25 to 40,000 gallons a day. So, that would be enough to water one acre, one inch. So, um, you could put in, we could put in an underground containment tank, all right? Which is a grid system with a liner, um, and you would basically size that based on their irrigation needs. And you might say you could put in a tank that's 50,000 gallons and that's going to water several acres. Once that tank gets up to the certain fill point, there's an overflow that now that goes to storm, okay? But you're basically going to size that tank based on how much water they would be utilizing for irrigation. That would kind of be the strategy in that instance.
Yeah. And they don't have an irrigation system, they don't have it in built, in ground, they use what's called a water wheel, right?
That's correct.
So, that, so that doesn't use, that doesn't use a huge amount at a time, right?
Yeah, but, what I would say in, in Wisconsin, um, uh, if we're using the water for, uh, above-grade irrigation, being sprayed, then we need to engineer and treat the water on the outgoing side of that. So, now you've got to run that water through UV, uh, infiltration prior to being it, being aspirated out into the irrigation field. So, the state of Wisconsin requires that. So, that tends to drive the cost up a little bit. On the backside, which in the studies we've done, it's came very close to being, uh, the same cost as the recirculating system. So, to capture and repurpose that water and now you've got to filter it and treat it with UV when it's going out to be sprayed out the ground, or in the recirculating system, you're filtering it before it goes out to the splash pad.
Yeah. We just have to find out what rugby is spending on water and then maybe that's a deduction they can then contribute, but I don't know if that's significant. If they spend just a few hundred dollars a month, it's probably not a big deal. I don't know.
Yeah, we'll find that out.
Could, um, well, we're interested in the rugby aspect of this, um, so if you use the, uh, the flow-through system and, I mean, you don't need the underground tanks, you don't need this, you don't need that, okay? Now, we're going to save the water for rugby, right?
And our fields, and our fields too.
And our, well, and our fields too. So, then you'd have to put in all of this mechanic, an additional-
UV filter, yeah.
Yeah.
So, then we'd have to-
Or, or we wouldn't do it, maybe rugby would do it, you know, so if it, if it hasn't-
I, yeah, I was just trying to, just trying to make sure that I understood that, you know, that tank or that extra part to it is extra if we, if we were, had to cite it on the flow-through.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, Sean, could you back up to item number six? Or, I guess Parks and Rec both do, they got a couple other items here, two with Ron and Sean's here.
Well, that's the same item.
Yeah.
Parks and, the committee discussed it and I guess Jim or Sean, you guys can summarize.
Yeah, it was, um, all, we had three citizen members there and they all were very much in favor of the flow-through system as opposed to the recirc. That was the committee's recommendation, um, so, kind of, we's unanimous about flow-through, but, um, just for a variety of reasons, we talked about it longer than we're just talking about it here. I think, uh, just the idea of the maintenance being simpler and the simple, the simplicity of the system, um, was the big selling point for most of the members. What would you say, Sean?
I agree, yes.
Was there any strong feelings on the repurposing versus just-
I think that we got to get the data on the water, how much, how much their rugby is spending, how much we're spending on water and then see if there's a payback because otherwise, we'll just put it back into the water table, I think, right?
Yeah.
Sean, in the, in the memo for the, for like low-end costs for flow-through systems starting at, uh, 30 grand, um, there were some, sounded like some additional costs, maybe it was, maybe these weren't an apples-to-apples system that, that they were using up there, but, um, it's showing a recirc in your memo starting at 200,000 and a flow-through at 30. Theirs was a little closer, so I don't know if they included some other costs. It was about an $85,000 difference where this is 100, 170,000 dollar difference.
Yeah, that, that was just on-
Water features.
Water features and the amount going through.
Correct.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
That was probably just on the water features, the toys themselves.
So, I, I believe it comes down to, you know, how many features we have and how mu, how many gallons per minute we're pushing out, uh, on a daily basis.
All right, um, this is a discuss and consider item, anybody?
Yeah, I guess I'll make a motion to, um, recommend that Sean pursues investigation of the flow-through system versus, um, the recirc system based on the recommendation of the committee, of the Parks, Parks and Rec.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, motion and a second then to have Sean pursue the flow-through system? Any other discussion?
Is this in the current budget or is it somewhere considering?
It's 2020.
2020 somewhere, a couple years off.
Yeah.
You haven't considered what the bike path's going to be costing us at that point. So, I, I'm still, as I said, a couple meetings ago, 2020 for this, as far as I'm concerned, probably not going to be within our reach unless we get a bunch of money from somewhere because the bike path's going to cost us a significant amount of money and that, that's going to hit at the same time, which we haven't gotten into the discussions about that and that we've committed to already. The other problem I have with this whole thing is it's again outside, beyond a fire or beyond the railroad tracks at a spot where people cannot get to by walking easily, whereas this should be in, more in the village. That park is never going to be in the village because of the water and other issues around it. So, to me, this is a bit premature. Splash pad maybe, but not in 2020 and probably not there as far as I'm concerned.
Well, the problem with putting it in any other park is the other parks are in neighborhoods already and a lot of times people don't want new things in the park by them. That causes people to go to the park more than currently.
And we also don't have the parking at any other park either, you know?
You don't have the parking there.
Well, there's 60 spots compared to any other park.
Throw in a, throw an event in Airside-
Right, rugby, we just, just talked about that today, Sean and I, we were discussing parking because they say if these splash pads do attract a lot of people-
Right.
And parking is, is a, you know, I, I didn't realize how much of a draw they are, so on a hot day, parking is an issue.
And wouldn't it be nice if people could actually walk there?
Yeah, no, it, it would be wonderful, um, but you're never going to get more than maybe a, um, you know, a, probably a fifth or a, uh-
Yeah, at least have-
An eighth of the village to be able to walk, you know?
If you at least have sidewalks, people can get the stroller out and go.
Yeah.
And I've seen people walking a long ways, especially if it's a parking problem. So, you're going to have a splash pad, so where's the next parking lot going to go out there?
Yeah.
That's my question. So, I mean, I'm-
But it's tough, I mean, I, I mean, community park doesn't have parking, you know, Airwood Park, I mean, I can't think of a park that has anywhere close to the parking that we have at, at Bakken, but what are your thoughts? Did you think of any other spots where we could put it?
No, we talked about it at, at our friends here meeting a little bit and, uh, just the, the amount and we're going to bring some people into the community by having this. That's what a lot of families do is they go splash pad to splash pad around, around Dane County. So, we believe that we are going to bring some people into the village, which I think is a good thing as well, but to take, and we're talking as, as making Bakken a destination park, which is kind of what we're talking about, we could put in something smaller at, at a different park, but not something to the size that we're talking about here without flooding that park and kind of going back into a Thaden issue where too many people are converging on one park and there's not enough parking to, to handle, you know, 30 or 40 cars.
Okay, so then, Sean, that goes back to my point. Where is the parking going to be at for this?
There's plenty of parking there for just the splash pad. Now, if we have to take and, you know, if there's, there's two or three, maybe four rugby events over the course of the year that draw huge people, so if we had to look at, to me, I think that's a good problem to have, like we do have the field, uh, that's currently not developed where, where folks park for the Fireman's Festival. So, we could ask that rugby direct people that way or the village could just say, you know what, for these two days, we're not going to, we're not going to turn the splash pad on. I mean, if it became that sort of problem, I, I'd- I mean, if it became that sort of problem, I, I'd like to have that problem, that we, you know, have too many people in one area. But that's, that, that would be an option.
I guess I'd like a plan, figuring out how to deal with the parking, because even if rugby isn't having an event, I've been over there for soccer events where both fields are being used, and there is not a parking spot to be had, none. And that road is treacherous.
And there's no street parking close by, people park on the street.
And walk.
Yeah.
Is there gonna be parking there when those new houses go in across the street?
There's no parking on Clark and no parking on Vilas Road there.
Yeah, in fact, Clark will get worse because of the bike path, because we're gonna take out some parking-
Yeah.
-with that.
Moving forward, you know, with the development of the park, there is parking added, but that's several years down the road.
I'd say you better cover the parking issue first.
When I was talking with people, there were a lot of people that wanted to have a splash pad, or they brought up a swimming pool. So, I mean, having a splash pad in our community is an important thing, as there's not a lot of things. And on our list is family activities, which would be part of the splash pad.
I'm for that part, but again, I'm concerned that we're, we're not dealing with other issues that are at hand in order to accommodate this, you know, destination.
Can I ask you a quick question? You, you said earlier that the rugby field's suffering a lot of people in the area, right?
Yep.
Do we have an idea of percentage, or how many people actually would, you know, out in those rugby fields come into our village to use our businesses?
I don't. I know that they, they do the high school state tournament there, and so they're, they're, obviously that parking lot is not big enough for that. So they're using the overflow into the field at that point to park. I don't know the exact numbers of like what tickets they sell or something like that. I can look into that.
Well, I'm just thinking if we had it more in a location that's away from Bakken, out in an area where we actually have more businesses, maybe people would go have lunch here, and I'm always thinking business, I'm thinking of, you know, if we can get people to come here, that's awesome. We're so happy you came to our community, but all your air spends money.
Yeah, it is, it is, we talked about that, that Bakken, Bakken is a ways, away from all businesses, and bike trail's gonna be away from businesses too, most, most of it. It is kind of a dilemma, but I just don't know, without coming up with a new park, what other park could hold it?
No, I get where you guys are coming from too.
Yeah.
It's a tough one. We're spread out in an interesting neighborhood, we have businesses way out-
Yeah.
Commercial park.
Can't make the whole park a parking lot.
Yeah.
Half the park a parking lot, so it's tough.
You know, in Forest, they've got one, and they've got no, no parking lot at all for it. They've just got it on a block, in the center of a block, people park on the street.
Mm-hmm.
As far as you can't do that at Bakken Park, because there's no place to park on the street.
With the additional parking, is there signage, JJ, for the field, like overflow parking, like it's always up, people know they can go park in that field, or?
No, it's direct. I think rugby must be able to do it once.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if we had the signage up there so people knew that there was still a place to park, you know, had something we could leave up there for overflow parking.
Other than the high school tournament, the, most of the rugby events happen in the spring and fall, right?
Correct.
That's what we're told, meeting.
Through the summer, they, they, they don't do anything really from the first week of June until mid to late August.
And that's when the splash pad's gonna get used.
Correct.
So it is kind of good in that respect, but I get your point, you know, and money is always a big concern, I don't know. How net, net, do we have an idea? We, we're not gonna know until the fall of how much the bike trail is gonna cost us, right? We really don't have any hard numbers yet, because we don't know what's gonna get approved, right?
As far as the splash pad, in twenty sixteen, it was slated for twenty twenty in the financial management plan, and it would be part of a larger borrowing of other projects at that time. So that's, that's just how it's currently slated in there.
Where in the master plan is the bike path?
I'd have to-
We're hoping to get-
Twenty nine.
We're hoping to get grant money to cover the vast majority of it, right?
Right. Seventy-five percent, still twenty-five percent less.
I don't know. There's lots of many moving parts.
I believe that was also in there for either as soon as nineteen or twenty.
Yeah. But I think the path itself isn't gonna be ready till twenty twenty-one, right? Twenty twenty-two?
Something like that.
Yeah, they were pushed out maybe even further. I don't know.
No, but the county would certainly love to see us move faster than they are.
Then they could pay us, right?
In the meantime, we can just run some garden hoses and sprinklers out there.
Sprinkler, yeah. Sprinkler, perfect.
I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start an ice cream machine, or shop.
Yeah, yeah.
Make a fortune. There you go.
We have a motion and a second for Sean to pursue the flow-through version. Any other discussion? If not, I guess all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All upstanding. Okay, how many ayes? Do we have?
Maybe we could just do a, let's do a roll call vote and make sure you've got the right numbers here.
This is just for him to do and some research.
And if, if I may, understand that you're not approving the splash pad, you're just giving us direction as to, because there's a big difference between if we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars on a recirc system, or if we're not. So it's just planning to get there. It's just direction for us to, we're, like I said, we'd, we'd take a hundred thousand dollars off of the features and the size of it. So it's really just direction as to how we can proceed to plan for it.
Want to do a roll call vote?
What did we have for numbers?
Let, let's do a roll call.
Okay.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Henrik?
Aye.
Allen?
No.
Russell?
Stand.
Williams?
Aye.
Support it two to one.
Motion passes forward to with one extension.
Do we know when we hear back as far as, any idea, were you doing the research on this?
I can have something hopefully by next board meeting.
Is your group gonna meet again then, Friends Group?
We're meeting on, a week from tonight, yeah. What, just so I'm clear, what information are you looking to have?
Well, you're gonna do, this is in order for you just kinda dig in and figure out which direction makes more sense if we go that route and what's involved.
Are you looking for water usage by rugby? Is that something that factors in there?
Everybody information we can get.
Yeah. What, what rugby will help pay if we wanna do the repurpose, otherwise we put it into the retention funds, I guess. And then if we can come up with a solution for the parking issue, like additional signage, it's always up there so people know that they can park there.
And is rugby even willing to consider contributing, knowing that they'll get the water, if that's an interest for them?
The rugby representative was very interested in that, but obviously, they gotta look at what their bill is, you know?
And cost.
Because if they're, if they're paying just five hundred dollars a year for irrigation, then that's not a non-factor, you know?
Yeah.
Is there something they're putting in, they're putting in like bathrooms or something, so aren't they?
Mm-hmm.
That's what I know, right? It's always been a goal of theirs, but they're building something and we're supposed to share the bathrooms.
It is, it is unknown exactly what would be constructed at this point, because there isn't approved plan. We've asked them to come back on a number of occasions to say, we wanna deviate from this plan and do the following instead. That has never happened, so.
They're just doing their own thing, yeah.
Well, they do say-
What did, what did the last meeting, you, you met with somebody, right?
Yeah, on the phone, talked on the phone, yeah, with Max.
Oh, talk, yeah, that was it.
Max Zabowski.
Yeah.
And it was just, that was about, would be, we'd be willing to work with them, because I think part of the plan is that their facility needs to have public restrooms. And so would we be, would the village be willing to work with them so that they didn't have to do the public restrooms if we were building a shelter? That was, and if they, they talked about contributing towards that shelter as well.
Yeah.
Nothing was ever, there was no numbers talked about or anything like that. I said, as far as I'm concerned, I'm open to it.
There're plenty of coming to it, a planning commission sometime soon to, for a storage facility, but that's the only-
Oh, yeah.
That's the only thing I know about as far as their site.
At the Parks and Rec, the person that was there from the rugby said like they were planning on doing something by the end of the year, or having some sort of plan, because they-
All they were gonna do by the end of the year was reassess where, what their financial situation is and come up with a plan. So that's, that's all he committed to. He was very conservative. Paul, right?
Yes.
And that's all he said.
Okay. All right. The other item is discuss and consider Fireman's Park Playground Replacement.
Yep, I put a picture of that in your packet. That was the one out of our, I think we had sixty-one or sixty-two total votes when we put it on poll code, but that was the one that received the most votes. And so I'm just looking for permission to go ahead and have that particular playground by Lee Recreation installed yet this summer at Fireman's Park. And that was fifty-nine thousand dollars that was approved in the plan, and it's actually coming from Park Development Fund, so it's not on the list.
I'll make the motion to approve the Fireman's Park Playground.
A second.
Motion and second to approve the Fireman's Park Playground Equipment Replacement. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're back up to item six, unfinished. Discuss and consider Village Mission and Vision Statements. We talked about that and did a little word smithing last time. I think we oughta kind of have a copy of what we had in the minutes there. Everybody good with that?
One, one comment under mission, I, I just thought of, one of the discussions that, that you guys had, I remember, was try not to have any redundant words in there.
Right.
And I just, under the mission statement, commute, community is used twice. Community services, community appeal.
We like community.
It's not right.
Yeah.
It's not, it doesn't mean it's wrong, I was just pointing that out.
I'm just kinda reading it to myself, I thought it sounded pretty good.
Is that what we had?
Yes, it's written.
No, I have it. I have that on there, I'm just looking at my previous notes.
You might have to give your notes to Lisa, I thought, because remember, you rewrote it, and Lisa might have notes.
Did you just delete that second community?
I think that was more-
Yeah, it should've been in the minutes, right?
Yeah. Very encouraging.
Why don't we just take out the first community? That makes more sense, providing services for our citizens, instead of community services.
I'd, I'd say actually the second one would be better.
You think so? Neat, appealing.
So what kind of services are you gonna provide? I wouldn't mind a back massage once in a while.
Hey, whatever you want. Whatever you want, Matt said, go ahead, he'll do it.
Get that as part of this, before we set up.
Otherwise, two communities are fine too.
Anybody got the source for community?
I don't, I mean, I, just reading it to myself, I'm fine.
Village?
Either way.
And you got two villages?
Oh, no. We could actually, we could split, we could split and become two villages.
Yeah.
Community services versus very close to a community, a village, a metro area.
The greater higher growth area.
Metroplex.
That was core services.
Yeah, I think that's what I had, core.
I guess I don't have any strong feelings on changing it, or you could drop one of the communities, or whatever you think sounds better.
I'm good with how it reads.
What's that, Jess?
I said I'm fine with how it reads.
Okay. We, we're good with the way it is?
Yeah.
Either way.
It's fine.
Okay. I think we tend to analyze that stuff more than somebody who's just gonna read it once and, you know?
For sure.
So that, that's fine.
Remember, it's living too, so you, you adjust accordingly.
Yeah.
Technically, you already approved the minutes, so keep it like it is.
Problem solved, you're good.
Under Bill and Vision, should we have a village of Cottage Grove? It'll be a safe rather than, that's, you know, we start out with mission, the village of Cottage Grove, and we say Cottage Grove, Vision. Should it be the village of Cottage Grove?
No, because vision is future, so maybe it will be a city, maybe it will be a metropolis.
And then we've got village at the end, which we could just, of a, a, a growing community or something, you know?
Yeah, and then we'd have community twice in that one, too.
I'm not sure who wants to be the school mom, but-
John, just leave it.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, like John said, it's a living thing, if we do want to come up with a better thing, we can amend it at some point, and, you know, but it's fine with the way it reads, for now on.
This is a great start.
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
Okay, so we don't really need to approve it, 'cause it's already in the minutes, Lee? Is that?
Yeah, I mean, well, you can approve it, just, you can approve it to emphasize it, but that, you know, that's fine, I don't think there's any big technical issue.
All right. I guess I'll make a motion to approve it as printed in the minutes.
I'll start it.
Okay, motion and second to approve as printed. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Motion passes. Item B, review village board's list of priorities. I think everybody's got the latest and greatest up there. One of the things I, I thought of when I was looking through these, some of these priorities cost money and some don't.
Exactly.
It's almost like I wanted to make two separate priority lists out of it, which is why when I first sent it to Matt, I had like a total of thirty or forty instead of twenty. But I was looking at what costs money and what we can just change as far as policy and procedure, I guess.
John brought up last night, during the workshop, that's kinda where the, like, ease and impact analysis, figuring, 'cause just because something is low on the list, if it's, if it's quick and easy to do, then it makes sense to do.
Yeah.
So I think that's, you know, strategically thinking of that.
Low hanging fruit, that's good, yeah.
Yeah. Obviously, some of these will take care of themselves during, you know, the upcoming budget process and financial management plan update.
Matt, Matt, didn't you say that TDS was moving forward in August, September, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're powering a little bit.
They're gonna be funding up this.
Yeah, they will.
Worrying about it.
So I mean, maybe at budget time, we review it again and see what we're gonna knock off of there.
I mean, if, if any of these particular items of staff's writing a memo, I think there's, you know, maybe the reference where, you know, something ended up on the list just to remind people, and, but, at least in my opinion, I don't think you guys need to vote on this, it's just information that you guys, you know, worked on it together, you see kinda where things, you know, where people individually, what their ideas were, and, and also as a group.
By budget time, we may have something to add to it or change to. All right, any other thoughts or comments on this?
I assume everything was entered correctly? Did, did everyone look at, at their own one individually, just making sure that that's
I assume everything was entered correctly. Did everyone look at, at their own one individually, just making sure that that's correct?
I'm just looking at the, make sure they don't add twenty at the bottom.
Should I add all the totals and see if that totals multiple?
Yeah, that's true. I'm encouraged personally that, the first one being thirty-six at least, that's good. It's a big part of what happens for our future.
Yeah.
I think the next steps are actually probably breaking it down as to what is, okay, so we created three TIDS, you know, what's, what's the next step, and what's the step after that, to kind of keep us on point here over the next year or so. So we are moving towards the priority.
And I think as long as number one keeps going in the direction it is, funding comes in for all the other things. You gotta start with money.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Which is definitely good intentions.
Just one comment for me. I understand on a macro level, the average wide reevaluation, and I see two individuals listed at pretty high, and maybe a future agenda, and would be like a discussion or a presentation. The pros and cons going into next year for delay. And like I said, I understand, you know, the ninety percent for market value and certain things like that, but just to get people's opinions, so before we go into budget time.
Yeah.
To make an informed decision.
Matt did send out an email on June twenty-second about the effects.
But we could certainly invite the assessor to come out and answer questions, and then, we do need to wait a little bit of time to get information from the state to see, you know, where, what actual, what the percentage actually is. So it's probably worth waiting at least till that time.
Yep.
But.
That might be a good point.
Okay. All right. Nothing else. Discuss and consider ordinance zero-five dash twenty-eighteen, ordinance revising sections of chapter one-thirty building inspector. I think we've got that tweaked to the point where we're good with it.
What, what I did was, I took the language that's in the code and looked at the areas that I had checked off as we were doing town, because contract, and then I looked at the contract and took the language that we had actually adopted and incorporated that into the ordinances to be revised. And I did talk with Mr. Beacon today, and he said he was fine with the, with the language. So if, so this would be ready for you to take action on and finalize tonight, unless you have questions, and then we can try to answer those and then bring it back.
Hey, Lee, has anything, nothing else material has changed in this since we last looked at this, correct?
Actually, everything is, well, I think we looked at it before. We looked at the contract, but not the ordinance changes.
Oh.
I, I was, I had said cleverly that we needed ordinance changes, and then had promptly forgotten to do them. So we did pass the contract, and then now these are the, these are the follow-up.
Okay, so this is just the ordinance? Okay. All right. Any thoughts on this? I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it, like what we talked about earlier.
I like the amendments.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, motion by Jeff, second by Jeff, or motion by John, sorry, second by Jeff, to approve. Any other consideration? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. All right, moving down the list, new business, discuss and consider new operators licenses for July twenty-eighteen to June twenty-nineteen for the attached list of individuals. Anything red flags on those, Chief? They're all good.
They're good.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in second to approve operators licenses for July twenty-eighteen to June twenty-nineteen for the attached list of individuals. Any other discussion?
Second question, the last one, Deb Ushon, place of employment was left blank. Is it just a blanket operator license, or is it for a certain business, or?
The last one?
Yep.
Operator licenses actually belong to the person.
Okay.
So they can take that license and work anywhere in the village.
Yeah, that's, that's a common question, because the license, there's liquor license that stays with the establishment. Operator's license is like the driver's license carries with you. Okay. All right. So, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Discuss and consider block party application for Shane and Sarah Genshaw at eleven-fourteen Starlight Lane. We have these from time to time. Do you have any issues with that application, Chief, in the block party thing?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second to approve, and any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. And also discuss and consider block party application for Casey Brunig at three-oh-two Melissa Lane. I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we, just a quick question, I see that there's amplification, they're gonna do DJ. It says that it's August twenty-fifth at two-thirty, do we know how long that's gonna go for?
It has to, it has, and when our ordinance says, the noise, the noise ordinance says, otherwise they have to ask for an extension.
Yeah, then you have to appear and ask for a very extended. And then, yeah, sometimes as public works, give them barricades to put up, and I mean, you guys take care of that? Or they bring them back, whatever, okay? Okay. All right, I move to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion in second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Reports from village boards, commissions, and committees, Deer Grove VMS.
Deer Grove VMS, we met on Thursday, June twenty-first. Contract remitancy medical service for town at Deerfield is complete, started on July first. Proceeds of the contract are gonna be used for the monitors that the AMLETS are gonna be getting. We've got a new office manager, and I forget her name, Judd. Account manager. Yeah, she has, it's.
Man needs something.
Okay.
Yeah. So she's in place.
Isn't she a volunteer?
Yes, she is.
We did consider and approve purchasing the cardiac monitors, which I had mentioned. This next meeting, we're gonna have the six-month, or discuss the six-month review for the new chief. There's some discussion about a capital replacement schedule, which we received, but we didn't talk about in the meeting. And, um, missed anything, John?
Nope. We meet on this Thursday.
Okay.
Good times.
Yeah? All right, law enforcement committee, we met on June twenty-sixth. One, one of the things I remember is the body cam footage showed us from the officer's body cams, and we're talking about putting him on a different, because a lot of times, all you see is the officer's hands, and you can't see really what's going on, but.
His hand and gun looked really nice though. His arms, you know?
We're tweaking how we position the body cameras on the body.
Okay.
Maybe the epaulettes on the uniform appear, so you get less interference. But they're working very well.
Yeah.
Yeah, very clear.
Yeah. I think I talked about fireworks.
Yep.
The signs went up, not without a little bit of criticism, but to an officer, everybody said they had much less.
It was quieter.
Yes.
Yep. I mean, you're always gonna have a few people that didn't read it or don't care, but.
We even had a few officers stopped as they're driving through neighborhoods, asking if it was allowed because the sign said it wasn't, and are we gonna get tickets, and so.
Did you get any tickets?
I, I don't think we wrote any tickets, because every time we got a specific complaint, we get out there, it wasn't happening anymore. So, but it was much less.
Good, good.
Good. All right, sound good, and we meet on the twenty-fourth? Yeah, twenty-fourth of July. Okay. Parks, Rec, and Forestry, we did. Matt Biglandville.
So we met on July fifth at six-thirty, after changing the time of meeting several times one day. But we finally met, and we discussed the, the bill, and it was all in order with everything. And, and then we discussed the dog park idea. So what we're gonna, what we came to determine was that the town will have their own meeting about it, and then we would probably put it on one of our agendas, and then open up, you know, if the public wanted to come and speak, give us their opinion. Because we wanted to get a, a public opinion on, you know, is, is there a need for it? If there's a need for it, what kind of things do we think about, just kind of starting those first steps. And obviously, it wouldn't be, we're gonna do it right away, but just someone to look at. There are certain things that are required. One of them would probably be a chain link fence, obviously, up and around the whole perimeter. There would have to be some of those trees to the south taken out, so a parking lot can be put in there. But you don't have to have a paved parking lot, it can be gravel.
Okay.
If you go to most dog, dog parks around the area, they're all gravel. So.
Jeff, you might wanna check with, Mike, you would probably know this too, if you're building on anything that's regulated by the DNR.
The DNR's already said they, they've already bought, yeah, they said it's fine. As a matter of fact, a lot of the dog parks are right on top of old landfills.
You think the county would be interested in? I mean, could we kind of pull that up to?
We discussed that, you know, if we, we'd wanna probably have them help us on some of it, we'd have to find out if there's any grants, or if there's anything we can get from them, and then, this is just preliminary. We wanna get a public opinion, you know, like, hey, would a dog park even be used, or what are people thinking? And then, they did try this, what was it, oh?
Probably ten years ago.
Yeah, oh, seven, I think it was. And all those houses around there, a lot of people came forward and said, we don't want it, because they didn't want, they didn't want people, it's kind of that same principle with.
Oh, that's funny.
And some of the, some of the things that's on the list were funny, you know, like, what if a dog gets out and comes and bites my kid? You know, that could happen on the street if a leash.
Yeah, right.
You know, so.
That, that neighborhood's protective of that area, because they're the ones who really created the, the issue in the first place. They were convinced that the landfill was gonna blow up.
Yeah.
And, or their houses were.
Yeah, yeah, but they're, some of them have changed hands since oh-seven, and the, some of the public opinion around there is they were, they would like to see it. So it'd be nice to see what the village, what the village members say, and what the town people say, so.
Have you reached out to the Dane County Board Supervisor for our area yet?
No, we haven't. This is just something that, we started talking about like the last meeting, not this last meeting, but it is a great use of the land, isn't it?
Yeah.
And then our next meeting's on the twenty-fourth of September.
Okay. Can we circle back to Parks for just a second? Sean wanted me to discuss the fact that, should I talk about the Willow Run Park, or?
Yeah.
Okay. We are gonna change in the long-range plan, playground replacement from community park to Willow Run, just because of the assessment of the playground equipment, it looked like it was going to be better utilized at Willow Run.
So you're thinking in twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one, we have a, replacing the community park playground, and after assessing the Willow Run Park, we just asked that we maybe shift those around. So move Willow Run up to twenty-twenty, and then push community back to twenty-twenty-two, but that'll be something that you guys can decide when the financial management plan comes, so it's really not moving any money.
Community parks in a pretty rough neighborhood, so.
Yeah.
Kind of a lost talent, sure.
None of that.
Sean, do you, when you were talking with Verizon about the dog park.
Yes.
That might be, Jeff, you might be a resource, that at least, there was some discussion of that going in over here.
Okay.
And then, so I know that we did a little bit of work on it.
Did a lot of work on it. So, yeah, love to talk to you about what I knew.
All right. Community Development Authority, you'll see three separate items, each one is just for a different TID. They're basically the same. I guess I'll let Matt and Lee talk about them, what these development incentive guidelines are.
Actually, Aaron's a sad person that broke them together.
Yeah, so these are related to the TIF districts, but they're not part of the official project plan. The official project plans are very much regulated by the state as to what goes in them, and how you approve them, and how they're amended, if they are. These are basically the rules that we're giving ourselves for how we would handle requests for funding out of each of the districts, what our priorities would be for each district. And they are a little bit different in their points of emphasis. TID eight and nine, a little more of a priority on architectural quality, whereas TID ten, where freeway is really more based on tax base or employment. So they're similar, there's a lot of overlap, but there are slightly different points of emphasis.
Like Don in section five, you'll see where some words were struck out and things were put in in blue, but nothing, they're just kind of updated.
Yeah, and these were all approved by committee.
Yep.
And I, we met, and again, it's just around, trying to provide a little more guidance to potential developers that come in and just let them know, you know, where, where the direction is going, and again, all alignment with our comprehensive plan. And Aaron did a nice job of, you know, kind of outlining that, and certainly the committee members provided good input there as well.
When there's an application, the CDA is interested in taking a first look at that, providing a recommendation to the board. Since they were in from the ground level until creation, I, I think that'd be a good resource to help provide a recommendation to the board, so.
If anybody's looking for incentive or something, I guess CDA is where they should start.
At least for TIDs eight, nine, and ten.
So do, do we need to discuss and consider each one individually, or can we make a motion to approve all three?
Approve all three, I, I don't.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve development incentives for TID eight, nine, and ten.
Okay, there's a second? Second, okay, motion in second to approve development incentives guidelines for TID eight, nine, and ten. Any other discussion? Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Awesome. Public Works and Properties Committee, JJ, did you wanna come up and talk to us, I guess, about the sidewalk replacement, and if anybody wants to talk about it? I just noticed they were grinding some sidewalks instead of replacing them?
Seems like it works really well.
We try to use that whenever we can, we try and keep it as cost-effective as possible.
Yeah.
But the memo you'll see in there is with the rising costs for the ones that we did have to replace this year, we had our first one, the residence portions, I believe it's just, it's like a dollar to over five hundred dollars. So wanted to offer an installment plan, basically. Committee approved it. Essentially, it'll be the same rules, they call up and say, we don't, we can't pay this this year. If it's over five hundred dollars, they can pay a portion this year, at least half. We'll just basically, Chris and I track all these, we'll basically start next year's, and they already have the invoice waiting for when they go out next year for the community park. It'll have the same one-point-five percent per month penalty if it's not paid on time, they'll be invoiced, you know, again, next year, along with the new neighborhood, so it's not penalizing them, but it's also not putting us on the hook without having some kind of a way to get a little something, or something if they don't pay it.
And the threshold for replacement is if it raises up and becomes a trip hazard, does that kind of work?
Yes. Kind of, it's basically an ADA compliance thing, and this is year four now, so we're probably not where we should ideally be when we assess a neighborhood, just based on budget constraints and the fact that it's the first go-around through the village.
Okay.
But we get basically almost every half inch or greater taken care of.
Okay. All right, residents, good, I'm assuming some heads up that you're gonna be doing some work?
Send a letter with my contact info, and then they can call as soon as we have cost estimates, we give them to them. And now it invoices what I'll leave last week.
Yeah.
So that will get them some more calls.
Yeah, I haven't gotten any calls or emails, so I don't think people are too upset. I just had a couple of questions, I'm like, yeah, if it's over so much, you get an installment plan, and.
We're gonna charge them eighteen percent a year. One-point-five percent a month?
No, if they don't pay it. If you get, if you receive an invoice for your work this year, and it's got to do by date, you know, Chris and I have a spot each, so maybe a month and a half, based on, if you don't pay it by then, it's one-point-five percent. She'll send a second notice or a third notice. And then, so basically, anybody that doesn't install a plan, the remaining portion, they'll get the same thing next year, with that same, just, no, no, it's not, it's meant.
And I'm like, that's eighteen percent a year, so.
No, I think, with the rule, what we're looking for is just for those sections, where we had a lot of sections to replace, and there were few who were concerned, JJ was concerned about, that would go over a certain amount.
Right.
And that's where I think we worked with Deb and others to just confirm that we could do that. And then we put it into, on record.
Yeah.
So that it's there for the next go-around and next year, so this year's done. And there are a lot of nicer sidewalks now, I walked in a number.
Yeah, we're getting there.
And fifty percent, and the village contributing fifty percent is better than a lot of communities, it's a hundred percent homeowner responsibility, so.
Yeah. So, so is that fifty percent, because I had, I was out walking, and someone just mentioned that their sidewalk was buckling, and it's because of a tree that the village planted there, and certain years, certain variety of trees seem to be pushing it up more than other varieties?
The majority of the hazards are caused by trees. That's kind of a, when I do get calls, that's the discussion we have every year. get calls, that's the discussion we have every year in the spring or in summer.
I would say oftentimes it's a developer that had someone come in, put them in, in a, you know, a hundred of them in one day and they planted too low. And, you know, yeah, the roots are trying to come up.
And, and roots can do it even when they're planted properly too, it's just kind of, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I, yeah.
But, um, yeah, that's probably the thing that folks are most upset about is it's your village tree that's causing this issue. You have the sidewalk ordinance, that's kind of bound by that.
When you're doing the fix, it already, cutting the roots so that they're not...
Get the sidewalk out, see which ones are affected and make it as clean a cut as you can on the roots, um, and then, yeah, we don't, uh, don't want to pour it back in over the roots.
Okay. All right, what else we got? Public Works, uh, Public Works, anybody else have any comments or questions?
With, with them, you have to report on them.
Okay.
JJ, I'm just curious, do we charge them when we shave it, like?
Yep, just the wording in the discussion I had back in twenty fifteen, wording in our ordinance says any kind of maintenance, not to...
Oh, charge them half?
We had, I may come back here just because Kristin and I, and I talked with Deb to, at a certain point, with the amount of the, the grinding we do, the administrative time for our assessments and tracking it and then to send somebody invoice for seventeen dollars by the time.
Yeah.
It's, it's probably neutral at best. Yeah, every amount of time and energy that goes into it, but we have to change the ordinance, so...
I see.
Future agenda, cost of work on seventeen dollars, change the ordinance.
All right, um, I'll make a motion to approve the sidewalk maintenance and repair policies. Your second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second to approve, any other discussion, questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Uh, Joint Review Board, you'll see that in your packet also, I was not able to go to this one, but, um, I'll let Matt talk about it.
All, all three of the tids were approved unanimously and Deb provided a, uh, annual report on the, on Tid five, six, and seven, the existing tids, just a financial report, high-level report on twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen's activity and, um, that's about it.
Yeah, it's quite a process actually for creating and approving tids, it seems like there were several meetings on this, so it's...
Well, it's important to make sure the other taxing jurisdictions are in favor because we're essentially partnering, partnering with them on that and so...
Okay.
Yeah. Jack, the other thing, um, Deb, I know Matt, we're here at the time, but, um, Gellers does a, a superb job with laying everything out and making sure that all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed. And in this, that wasn't always the case, so we're very happy to be working with them.
Okay, Utility Commission.
All right, yeah, we met, uh, last Wednesday, the eleventh, um, we got some updates from Mike, uh, Progress Drive, Forest Main was done, I think they had some finished work at the time of the meeting, that's probably pretty close to being done at this point. Yeah, mainly the, uh, the main street lift station, um, the contractor supplying, de-watering and testing plan, I think there's a couple of different options and that's when you get a little more technical than my knowledge, so I don't know if there's anything to share on that.
We had a meeting with, uh, the DNR Hydrate, uh, they're, they're good with it because we cleaned up some of the, so, just to make sure that was the hydrated tree.
And then the other item note is, uh, Worry Ridge subdivision that developers have been granting exemption from infiltration, um, where do they sit, uh, at the time they were awaiting the developer's agreement, do we have that in? So that's in there?
They've got it, so now it's a question of...
It's in their court?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. That's really, well, the incentive of well three, uh, MSA's testing system pressure, like we got a complaint from a, a neighbor, um, and a true, ended up being a confirmed complaint, so, uh, JJ and his crew are working through that for the surges when the well turns on, um, and then the budget, uh, we'll, we'll be able to outfit all three wells with the digital scales, which, uh, upgrade the larger chemical tanks as well. Did I miss anything?
All right, sounds good. Uh, Plan Commission, you'll see a discuss and consider item, uh, Plan Commission approved a site plan application from Rigrid Builders and actually Andrew Humber is involved, if you don't know where that is, it's over on Progress Drive, four unit multiplex buildings at five oh three and five oh seven. We approved a contingent on getting a final grade plan, erosion plan, and a landscaping plan, I guess, is that where it was still at?
Yep.
Okay. Any, I'll let Aaron and Matt talk about it, but it seems like a really nice building. Ellery Jensen is one of the people involved with, and he plans on continuing to own it, it's not like he's gonna flip it and sell it. But any comments, questions?
I think that sums it up, they talked about the size of the units, they're all gonna be two-bedroom with a study, which is a little bit smaller than the duplex units that are adjacent, um, other than that, they've been zoned for this use ever since the plat was put in place back in the nineties.
Yeah, and there is, if you look at the grade of the lot, I think, and you said there's twenty feet of difference between the height and the low pin, so it's probably gonna be some retaining wall stuff put in, so it's gonna look pretty nice.
This is next to the other units then, right? As you come off violas on the, on the right-hand side, there's, there's empty last year.
On the south side between the duplexes and the south...
Storage place or whatever?
Yeah.
Okay, um, if there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan application from Rigrid Builders to construct two four-unit multiplex buildings at five oh three and five oh, five oh seven Progress Drive and contingent upon landscaping, grade and erosion.
Second?
Okay. Any other discussion?
What's the approximate value?
Uh, if you remember what the value was, I thought he mentioned, but I can't...
Don't know that anybody asked that.
No, I mean, there's a fair amount of masonry and I think these are garage under-units because of the grade, so there, there's a fair amount of masonry and...
When they come forward for building inspection, part of, part of the application is that estimation of construction costs, so that'll probably be a pretty good determiner.
They said they were using better quality siding than the...
Yeah, it's not your standard double four vinyl siding, it's upgraded kind of siding and...
No, I was looking at the TDS, it looks like a pretty decent...
Yeah.
Buildings, at least on paper.
Yep, and Andrew, I think, is gonna do the basement concrete work to make sure there's no issues with too high, too low, you know, that kind of thing for drainage, so... All right. Somebody second then?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a, a second then, uh, if there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Reports from Village Officers, Troy?
No report.
Okay, Jane?
Just wanted to thank Matt for the progress updates, um, it's appreciated, and if there's anything, um, we as a village, uh, need to do to, um, give TDS the green light, I know you said we're gonna get started in August or September and should be done next summer, that's fantastic, if, if there's anything we need to do to take roadblocks away, let us know.
Okay, actually, it's timely, I'll, I will, I'll say a little bit more on that when I get to...
Wonderful. Okay. Jeff?
I have no report.
Uh, John?
No report, just one question, one of the meeting minutes published after the meeting, that someone, a resident, asked me, because they like to read it versus watch it.
As soon as they're approved.
Okay.
But I'm not sure that I'll have tomorrow's, the one tomorrow, I'm not...
All right, okay.
...in the reverse, I would say.
Perfect, thanks.
Okay. Melissa?
Um, I just wanted to comment that, um, that the events in Sun Prairie have been hard on their community and has affected many in our community, and I just wanted to say that my heart is with them, as I know it's with all of us. Um, in addition, on that note, the next emergency government committee is August first for communities, so... Oh, and the other thing is, I talked to the town person and, no, later, no, I talked to the town person and they, um, indicated to me that, uh, they think that our village parks and rock department is doing a great job, so a little commendation there for you.
John?
No report.
Okay, um, just to, uh, touch on what Melissa said too, um, with what happened in Sun Prairie, um, Melissa brought this up and it's actually a good point and it's something that I guess maybe it's a question for JJ as far as like our gas shut-offs and things in some of these older underground buildings. When a building is new, everybody knows where the shut-offs are because the plan just got approved and it's first owner, but when things get walled over, remodeled and the way it backed blasted in Sun Prairie, took out the second building, I don't know where we stand with knowing where the shut-offs are or how we, what we would do if we had a gas leak on a four-inch main, I don't know what we'd do with that.
If you get a question for line energy...
Yeah.
Target where your water valves are, your sewer infrastructure.
Sounds like a good topic for the emergency government.
Yeah, I mean, that's something you want to shut off like ASAP, you have to...
Yeah, they can get us those locates, we can get them on our, um, GIS system. And then if we, if, if we had ability to get out there, you know, whoever the first responders are and they can pull up that map on a tablet, that would be helpful.
Could save a, a big problem, okay?
That applies to the only, for the village, to the town because there's too many...
Yeah, I mean, a line would just give you the locations, is that, you just ask them and they'll give you the, all the information, or how is that?
I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, it would just be good to have.
It's good that we're reviewing.
Yeah.
Continuing to review our procedures.
I mean, that's potential for another tabletop for emergency government too, I mean, that's... Uh, the other thing I had, I've had a couple of people call, I guess this is more a question for you, Chief Labor, um, the speed limit going east out of here, you know, goes from twenty-five up to fifty-five, and then coming the other way, I think it goes from fifty-five to twenty-five, and some people were asking about tiering that because going east, it's not so much of a problem, but coming into the village, people slamming on the brakes, hoping they don't get a speeding ticket because twenty-five mile an hour sign disappears and, is that something that we could look at? In the middle, like putting a thirty-five, forty-five and...
Well, I think there is a thirty-five right by the, by the dental office there.
Is it?
That's where it drops down, it's not twenty-five till you to like CBS or that.
Okay.
Am I correct about that?
No.
Yeah, Collins from Deerfield, yeah.
Oh, I'm thinking, coming into town.
Yeah, I've had lengthy discussions with him, he's a, he's a town resident and...
Yeah.
He's never had a ticket from us.
He did mention that when he called me.
Neither has his wife, and he thinks that it should be thirty-five or forty-five along here, and I said, when I started here, I got a complaint from a man in his front yard down there and his kid almost got hit. So I said, we would go out there and enforce the traffic laws. So we do, uh, we pull over a lot of people along here, but I said, I guarantee you, we very rarely write a ticket and we never sit down by the Wildwood Clinic where it changes from fifty-five to twenty-five, we do it up here.
Yeah.
And so I, I pulled out our statistics for this year, we've written seven tickets.
Okay.
All this year along here, this whole stretch, so...
It's not as big a problem then, as I would...
It's, we pull over a lot of people, but we rarely write them a ticket along here. So it's drive rate education, that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
And if we have someone coming in and complaining that our speed limit is being enforced too much, I think that's a good problem.
Yeah.
And that's what I told them.
Good. The other question I have, being in, out in the township, they do have authority to reduce it to forty-five, don't they?
Sure.
So I think maybe that's the solution.
Well, I think we established that they do have that authority because there was some question.
So I guess that would be my answer to them, is to talk to your town representatives and tell them to put up a forty-five mile an hour sign coming in or something, and so now gradually...
They can put those little orange flags on too, like they're going on violas and that.
Or they could get them flashing LED lights, whatever.
Have you seen those?
For all those watching, chief, I heard you wrote about fifty tickets, right?
Yeah, right. The, the people that complain about the speed are usually reserved for me when I'm talking to them about the ticket that they give, so...
That's kind of what I thought, okay. Good enough, that's all I have. All right, we're, anything else, Lee?
No.
Jay, Matt?
Uh, as Jim mentioned, TDS, we had, JJ and I had a good meeting with them, um, but once they, um, once they come in with the amount of crews that they have, it's gonna, it'll really stress, uh, JJ's staff, so he's doing some research with other communities, Oregon, McFarland, um, anyone else?
Alvera.
So, anyway, just trying to learn from them, how, how they have handled it with their staffs, which are a little bit larger, but we're, we're, what we're learning is that at least from, um, certainly an inspection standpoint, they've brought their engineer in to help with, with some of that, so try to get some, um, maybe a Jeddah item for the next time to discuss what JJ finds out from his research and just as far as, um, you mentioned being accommodating, we've heard some communities have looked to TDS to reimburse for some of those additional costs, we'll want to discuss that, if we want to waive that, how, how much would that estimated cost be, um, and how would we pay for that? So, but...
Would next meeting be...
Overall, I guess, a good problem to have, but...
JJ, next meeting would be soon enough to...
I think so, hopefully, I'll be seeing a couple of folks this Friday in person to get some more info.
Okay.
I've got some good feedback from a couple of folks already, but I think next meeting should be...
Because you don't need like a easement permit for every single residence individually, do you? I mean, just...
No, just the, the right way.
Okay.
If they're, if they go to their plan, they're gonna come in harmed with a lot, fought once.
Yeah, there'll be equipment sitting around for a while.
Yeah, well, I'm, wouldn't like them to sit around, it's gonna be more than...
Moving on.
Yeah, move it as fast as they can be accrued and do it, and that's wonderful, but terrifying for me.
Yeah.
And it'll be getting, you know, a lot of information out to the public to understand this is going on because a lot of people don't realize that they probably have a utility easement that goes through their backyard, and that's where a lot of this will start, is in people's backyards, um, right, so...
And I've seen some people that have put up fences which conform to our ordinances, but they've also put fences like literally right to the corner, right around utility boxes, and I've said, you might not want to do that because if somebody comes through, they might want to open that up, so...
Well, they'll be doing a lot of directional flooring, so they won't have, um, that's what they've been telling us, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, they'll just have pits all over, but it sounds like it'd be a lot.
Yeah.
Although we're gonna meet again with them, another kind of preliminary one this week and then keep talking to the other communities and see what they have been doing and finding.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Anything else, Matt?
No.
So they'll just work all through the fall until it freezes and then pick up in the spring, is that the plan?
Seems to be, yeah, it's really early, it was, not a log meeting, but that seems to be their plan is, yeah.
First year of Internet free for the convenient inconvenience.
There you go.
All right, um, Aaron?
I have a part.
Anything else, Chief Labor?
Nope.
JJ's winning, anything? All right. Item ten, consider approval of vouchers, any questions, comments?
Yeah, page four, I just, I'm guessing this is part of our rack thing that we do with, it says adult golf lessons for fifteen seventy-five.
For what?
Adult golf?
Golf lessons?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that through the Oaks, is that through a 20-year program?
Yeah, yes, it is.
Okay.
So we pay them to do the lessons for folks that signed up.
Gotcha.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve vouchers as presented. A motion and second to approve vouchers as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Aye, motion passes. Correspondence, I got nothing really official. I mean, I got a couple of things from Madison Transportation Board. They've got stuff here addressed to previous village presidents, so I don't think it's too official, but I'll let you know if I find something in this stack. Upcoming community events. Does that, any, here's, put that in there?
Well, I know with Cottage Grove Triad, I met this morning.
Okay.
And so they usually meet quarterly, but they're going to start meeting monthly now, probably, and they have a seminar or program coming up on August 28th at 10:00 a.m. at Taylor Ridge Senior Apartments. Dogs on Call, learn how trained dogs can help those who have special needs.
Okay.
And they, they're going to start going to different apartment complexes for those 55 and older.
Okay.
So that hopefully more seniors will participate, get information that helps them. There's also a state conference in Wisconsin Triad, Safety Conference on September 28th, and so I can send that information to Matt to send out to everybody.
Sure.
Because they're always looking for people to help to be part of that group, and only needs once a month, usually.
Okay.
So it's, it's nice, just to learn what they're doing to help our community is really important.
Yes, I guess it's not so much a community event, but we have this school board workshop thing coming up. I can't remember the date offhand, is it?
Well, they had a workshop.
That was last week, and then?
Was that, was the workshop last week?
Workshop was last week.
So they're having meetings this week?
Yeah.
Wednesday?
Yep.
Just a, just a comment, if you're, if you do know of a community event that you're going to, and you know that maybe others are going as well, if you could just alert staff, you know, we try to make sure that we get out a notice that says there could be a quorum at the, at the meeting, but no business is going to be taken at that, at that time. So if you, if you know of something, that's kind of what that's on there for.
Yep.
And the Lions are having a blood drive tomorrow afternoon, Red Cross and the Lions at Flynn Hall tomorrow afternoon.
Okay. Anything else?
We've got market days this weekend.
Oh, that's right.
Saturday.
August 11th. Okay. All right.
It's 1 to 5. Sure. Yes, it's 7 to 5.
Okay. All right, future agenda items, I know we just talked about the report from JJ that Matt mentioned. Anything else?
We can just discuss some of the, the dog park.
Dog park.
And maybe, you know, so it's posted public, so if anybody wants to come in.
Yeah, and they could also put it on that postal website, I think, yeah.
Is that just to get it, because it's not going to be, well, it's not village property, is it?
No, the village and, the village and, and town are joint on that property, so we do have to have some.
Jeff, do you have the, the actual settlement agreement for?
I have nothing.
Who's, who else is on?
Steve.
Chris, I don't know, Steve.